And are we going back to 6.2? Ready?
Ready.
Okay, we're back in session and we are going to finish our 6.2 item. Supervisor Sabatier?
So, upon further research, we have a explanation, and it makes sense to me. The new numbers are based on an hourly rate, and so if you divide every 15 minutes, so the hourly rate is $124 an hour total, divide that by four, every 15 minutes is $31. If you look at our new environmental health fees, they're all in increments of 31. Beforehand, it doesn't make sense to go from the before number to the current number because they just had a fee amount. It wasn't based on an hourly rate. It wasn't based on any specific thing except possibly historical costs from the past. And so to use a COLA increase or any other percentages does not get you to the end result. But the end result, looking at the hourly rate and the division of that rate, makes sense for the rates that were being offered to approve today in front of us.
Okay.
So, it didn't make sense to me when I was looking at the before and after and how we all got there, but the conversation is logical in my opinion.
He did say he can explain it.
So, any further comments or questions from the board? So, any comments or questions from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board to offer the resolution.
I will offer that resolution.
The resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Um, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye. All right, thank you. We will now go to our 6.3 item, our 9:30 a.m. item, Presentation of Mental Health Services Act Annual Updates for Fiscal Year 2017 through 2018 through Fiscal Year 2019 through 2020, and B, Consideration of Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2018-19 and Fiscal Year 2019-20 Annual Updates for the Mental Health Services Act Three-Year Program and Expenditure Plan for the Fiscal Year 2017 through 2018 through Fiscal Year 2019 through 2020. Todd?
That was a mouthful. Well, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the administrator of the Behavioral Health Services Department. Joining me here today is Scott Abbott. He's our program manager that oversees all the programs of the Mental Health Services Act, in addition to the Lake County Housing Continuum of Care. So, he's pretty busy, and I appreciate him coming here, helping me with this. We're here today to present the highlights and results and culmination of our three-year plan, Mental Health Services Act Three-Year Plan, because we need board approval to prove the resolution in order for us to take it to the state and move on to our next three-year plan, which that cycle has already begun. So, I'm gonna butcher this thing, so I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to run through this, but Scott, with your permission, I'll be jumping in here and there as we go through this. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott.
All right. Bruno, we'll get the lights and if we can move-
And we know what we're doing here with this?
And then move the microphone over, so it'll pick up Scott.
There you go. Good job.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to present this to you. The Mental Health Services Act, for those that aren't familiar with it, originates in 2004 from Proposition 63, which was a grassroots effort to extend and add to funding for mental health services across the state, taxing, I think it's 1% of anything over a million dollars that's made, so it's sometimes called the millionaire's tax. But it brings a great assistance to counties, particularly our county, in helping us provide mental health services. The Act itself is designed so that the services that are provided are different than traditional services that are funded through Medi-Cal and realignment, and so they're supposed to be an additional type of service as opposed to any kind of supplementation or replacement. Any questions about that? Everyone's over here? And so, today what we're doing, as Todd explained, is we have to do annual updates to our three-year plan. Our current three-year plan is through 2017 to 2020, and we are actually a couple behind. And so, we're actually presenting two year plans to you today, 1819 and 1920. There's not a lot of changes with 1819 because that's already happened, and so we can't really retro any changes. And so, the majority of any kind of changes we did are in this year's plan, the 1920. And the way the plans work is we also have the information that's gathered from the services provided by the Act in the previous two years, in some of this case, 1617 and 1718. And as Todd said, we're beginning our next three-year plan, well, actually already started our next three-year plan, but we'll talk about that more in a little bit later. This is roughly the number of services that were provided in 1617 and 1718. Obviously, as you can see by the numbers right there, that there's duplicates by the number of people served, so it's not the number of people that's received services, but the services themselves that were provided. Those are from all MHSA type of services.
Can I ask you to clarify that statement? Because it just says "people" on there. Are you saying that in the 52,402, it's visits or it's cases or things like that?
Right.
And it's not people?
Right.
Because obviously, we don't have 52-
Right.
The large majority of our population come to your services?
Right. Yeah, not 5/6 of our population receive services for that. Essentially, it's the number of services that were provided to people in our county.
So, like, multiple visits for one case would count as-
Right. Yeah, right.
Right. It's deceptive in that manner, right there.
And Scott and I had a conversation about this, because when I first saw these numbers, I thought, "What happened? Why are we down, you know, 10,000 people or visits, so to speak?" And we think it has a lot to do with outreach, that before Scott and I were on board, there just wasn't a lot of community education about what our department does and providing access to the services we provide. So, I'm hoping that the fiscal year after 2017-18, we'll see an uptick again, because we're out there pounding the pavement, trying to tell people what we do and also what we don't do, but-
And have you been similarly affected than hospitals have, where it's no longer you get paid by the visit, but you get paid by the outcomes?
No.
As far as reimbursements go?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Supervisor Brown?
So, I just want to be clear. It's not 52,000 people, individual people.
No, duplicated. Those are-
Do you have any idea what that, how many people there really actually are?
I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay, but there is a way to get that number?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is that, I mean, it's relevant. You know, you want to see, you know, it's just like, I remember Lake Transit, they used to talk about how they, you know, served 100,000 riders, while it was, you know, 100 riders riding 1,000 times.
Right, right.
So, you know, that's why, you know, it's important to know that. And, yeah, I have some other questions, but I want to wait till you're, you may answer them before I get a chance to ask.
It's a little bit difficult, let me explain one thing about that. It's a little bit difficult to get that actual number from our, mostly, it's not through the treatment services, because that, we can do that pretty easily. It's through the prevention ones that makes it tricky. Because prevention, a lot of times, they're gathering, you know, numbers of people that were served in prevention, which could be like in an event, you know, people come up and ask for information.
I get it. No, you can't, I get that. You can't get 100% accuracy on the number, but close enough to where, you know, and here's the example that I'm, you know, if you have somebody who's arrested, and I'm gonna talk about this a lot, about the jail thing, because, you know, my observation is, you know, I'm not gonna hazard a guess on the percentage, but it's a high percentage, probably higher than not, that the folks that we're dealing with at the jail are mental health issues largely. And, you know, each time, you know, there's a lot of frequent flyers out there, and each time they come in, it's a different event. And so, but it's the same person. So, that's, I'm curious about that. And then, you know, that same person may need some help outside of the jail, so that's a separate event altogether. So, those are the things that I'm more interested in, so.
One of the things about the Mental Health Services Act that also makes it special, I think, is that it's built and designed with stakeholder input, community input. Everything that we do as far as planning has to go before the public. We have stakeholder meetings, we bring it to the Board of Supervisors, we do, in this case, we do surveys across the county, perception surveys, trying to find out what is needed, what do we do well, what could we do better. And this particular assessment finding is finding our strengths and identified needs. The strengths, as you can see, there are positive perceptions of specific programs that we have, which include, for example, NEST, Motherwise, our wellness centers that are across the county, service quality and staff performance. Also, there's positive service access and coordination have improved over time. Community meetings provide a forum for education on mental health and services and opportunity to identify needs, which we have, we have four regular MHSA meetings a year, seeking stakeholder input. Positive perception of programs targeted to specific populations. We always try and target the underserved. And where substance use and supportive services exist, they are viewed as high quality, which I think is really good. Identified needs by our county include increased service capacity and workforce retention, improved care coordination at transitions, for example, jail to the hospital, kind of what you're mentioning Supervisor Brown, increased wellness outreach and engagement and education activities, targeted support for moderate needs, older adults and caregivers, youth, and linguistic capacity, perception that substance use is increasing, perception that survival needs are increasing. Any questions about that? And so, from these findings, these types of strategies have been built to respond to that. Redeploy unspent resources to improve capacity, which, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, when we talk about a little more of the budget. Expand mobile and community-based services, which include adding outreach workers to our peer support centers, and target underserved populations. And I particularly like that one a lot. We, you know, we started off in behavioral health with our treatment clinics, and then we recognized for a lot of the population, going to a treatment clinic can be challenging, can be, you know, there's, it's hard. You have to have some bravery to do that. And so, that's why we introduced the wellness centers, the peer support centers, which we have around the county. And then, we got feedback that we need to go even beyond that, and so, that's what the outreach, we want to do more outreach to go where the people are at, to try and find them and provide services to them. Increase partnership with senior centers. Expand county housing opportunities for adults with significant mental health needs, including building transitional and permanent supportive housing, which is something our director takes great pride in. Formalized prevention activities and localized prevention program, which essentially means we're, there's regional and statewide prevention programs, part of MHSA, and I want to really make sure that we have a really solid foundation for our prevention services as well. Improve tracking to identify moderate needs, which is something we, as behavioral health, we usually are focusing on the most severe mentally ill, but we also have to do well to identify moderate needs before they turn into severe mental illness. Consider ways to incorporate information on housing, food, and other supportive services into behavioral health service and education. Maintain partnerships with substance use. Team to design, coordinate, and implement programs. Any questions on those? And here's a specific budget that we're looking at for MHSA. On the column on the left, those are the different components of MHSA as regulated by the law. Community services and supports, or is our outreach and direct services for serious emotional disturbances or serious mental illness for all ages? Prevention, early intervention, prevention and early intervention is prevent the development of mental health problems and screen for and intervene with early signs. Innovation programs is, it's also mandated that we have that, which is testing new approaches that may improve outcomes. And then, we also have capital facilities and technological needs, and workforce education and training, which are transfers as far as financially from our community services and supports programs. We can do up to 20% transfer into those programs. Workforce education and training is building and retaining and train our public mental health workforce, and capital facilities and technological needs is building and creating and strengthening the infrastructure support, including for electronic health records.
And the new roof on our Clear Lake office.
Which, right.
Which we're happy that's finally done. Lars in here still?
Yeah. Also, the generator.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, we don't want to talk about that.
I have a question about this one, and it's, I don't know the specific answer, but I know that it's something that Todd and I talk often enough about, and I just want to make sure that it's public knowledge as well as how aware we are here on the board. What percentage of that leaves the county?
What percentage of that leaves the county?
The 6 million, 6.6 million.
I think about all of it stays in the county.
Oh, so this is not the outside contracts that we have?
No, no, no. These funds are, yeah, none of that is, I would say, yeah, I would say none of that's in the county.
Those funds you're referring to would be realignment funds?
Right.
That pay for out of Scotty County placement?
For our current servitudees and that, yeah, that's a different bucket of money. Good question.
Yeah. But it's also, you know, I appreciate that question also, because it really does show the value of these funds that are, that come into our county, and we can use all of them right here in the county to help our community. I'm, as you can tell, really excited about MHSA.
Well, this is one of the reasons that we created a manager position to oversee this. You know, I'm still learning my way through all of this, and when I really started digging into the programs and services that the Mental Health Services Act provides, it needs management oversight. So, I mean, and Scott's doing a great job with it, but as you can see, that's, you know, that's nothing to sneeze at. That's a decent chunk of change. And as you see, as we go through, you know, the final results of this three-year plan, I mean, we're really excited about building a more robust and dynamic three-year plan moving forward, which again, as Scott said, requires total stakeholder input. I thought I could just go in and move money around, and I don't have that authority or power. It's all driven by, you know, community input, which is exciting, because then they have buy-in on what we're trying to do. Sorry.
Great, thank you. Okay, here's a quick summary of Lake County's MHSA programs and what that money funds specifically, based on the last slide. So, under community services to support, we have Crisis Access Continuum, which supports our crisis services. It does a lot of after-care type of follow-up. Our forensic mental health partnership. Full-service partnerships, that's a significant one, the full-service partnerships. By regulation, over half of community services and supports has to be spent in the full-service partnerships. Full-service partnerships are a program, is a program that's designed to reach out to and treat the most severely mentally ill, those that are in danger of hospitalization, institutionalization, or incarceration, and receive wraparound services, and it has the catchphrase, "Do whatever it takes" to try and help them. Then, we also treat our older adult access through senior peer counseling, parent partner support, trauma-focused co-occurring disorder screening and treatment. And then, under our prevention early intervention services, there was the Critical Incident and Stress Management Team, Family Stabilization and Well-being, which is our NEST program, early intervention services, which target people that are young people before they go through their first break, trying to prevent chronic mental illness. Early student support, which is partnered with LCOE in the schools. Peer support recovery centers, which are now five centers that we have around the county. Our friendly visitor program for our older adults. Our Motherwise program, which is for the perinatal population and the risk that mothers are often under post-birth. Prevention mini-grants, which are, we have like a couple thousand dollars that people can apply for every year for an event or a service, for a one-time type of event or service. And our statewide and regional projects, which I mentioned earlier, we're also making local projects as well.
And I wanted to add to the early intervention services, I think I shared before, we were one of, what, five counties in the state of California recently chosen to roll out teen mental health first aid to 10th grade students, so we have staff going through training right now. We're hoping to roll that out to the schools, what, in January?
January.
In January, which ties into these early intervention services. And it's pretty exciting to be one of five chosen in the state, and I think one of, what, 34 nationwide, so.
Right.
And we have a need, obviously, so we presented a compelling argument, and so we're getting the training, and I'll keep you guys apprised of that.
And just a little more on that, because I'm super excited about that, too. And, you know, when I think of it, because what it's designed to do is designed to teach every 10th grader in the county, mental health first aid, so that they can identify and assist and help, you know, and watch out for their peers. It's gonna be every 10th grader. I mean, that's a generational-wide type of intervention. And when I think of it, I think of, you know, the struggle that our county has with, you know, being, you know, number 58 and all the healthcare type of things. But this is, that's the type of intervention that can make a real difference as far as mental health in our county for, you know, a generation to come. So, I'm really excited about that, because that's a real game changer for me when I think about that.
And along with that, too, behavioral health is also offering mental health first aid for the community.
Yes.
And you have classes, so the community-
Yeah, it's not age-specific.
Yes. So, you can go ahead and take, I actually took that, I think it was a six-hour class or an eight-hour class.
Oh, great.
Great information to be able to help your community, that you can, you know, have.
That's excellent. Awesome. Then, we have other mental health programs we have on there, CAT facilities, which we kind of mentioned already, electronic health record. The innovation, briefly, for our innovation project, what we're doing is a closed-loop referral and a virtual care coordination. The idea is what we're doing there, so that it'll make it easier to do referrals within our community, between different agencies and nonprofits, and county probation and DSS, to be able to refer around to each other and have that closed-loop referral, so we know what happens with those referrals. So, that's also a really great project. You have a question I can tell.
I do have a question. When I saw the closed-loop referral, I'm also wondering, how's the connection with other counties for people who are coming in the county and need a service? Do you have to start from scratch? Do you get to, through HIPAA, be able to receive their medical folders to continue from there when they leave our county? Are we sharing that information with other counties so they can continue the service from there? Because I think continuity is probably your best friend when dealing with behavioral health. Do we have that level of continuity between counties when people are moving around?
We, not as good as you'd like. There is, you know, small, you know, for foster care, for example, there is that a lot. There's, where the transfers happen very smoothly, the state has designed a system to allow, it's called presumptive transfer, which allows for foster kids to go between counties when they're placed out of county or within our county, and there's that contact with DSS and behavioral health, so that those records and information flow very easily. But for our other populations, that doesn't exist, and we have to kind of do it more the old-fashioned way of, you know, reaching out and inquiring with the previous county for the, you know, what's happened before.
And unfortunately, sometimes that requires research, because you may not know which county you're supposed to communicate with or what city.
Right, yeah.
Is the new Millennium software meant to provide better communication with others who might be using that same system, or is that just an in-house, not connected to some kind of cloud piece?
It's the latter.
It's an internal, and funny you mention that, because we're missing a meeting right now about, you know, kicking the thing off after this. This is where we have to go.
Kicking it off in a good way, not kicking it off in a bad way.
Yes. So, I'll keep you, again, I'll keep you apprised of that as well. We're very excited to roll out the system, but we're just now getting trained up in it, so.
It'll take a year to do it, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Program modifications, there's two programs which we're going to eliminate from the three-year plan, basically due to inactivity. One is the coordinated care for co-occurring behavioral and physical health conditions, and the reason we're eliminating that is it already exists within our mental health plan and behavioral health plan, and so, it's kind of duplicates what's already been taking place.
And again, co-occurring means folks that are suffering from both substance use disorder and-
Well, in this case, it's physical health-
Right.
And behavioral health, and we already, you know, have contacts with the clinics and so forth like that, and so, this really hasn't been used as a result. The Critical Incident Stress Management Team is, there's a similar program that already exists in place among the county's first responders. And so, again, it's a duplicate, and it wasn't used, and so, we're not gonna, we're just gonna eliminate it.
But if I'm getting it correct, that's not a program that's duplicated in your services, it's another service provided by first responders?
Right, yeah.
It's completely outside?
Right.
Is there still support provided by behavioral health to first responders for that program, or are we putting onus completely on them for that?
No, it's, we actually have a memorandum of understanding in place amongst law enforcement, our department, highway patrol, and hospitals that speak to this. So, there is a system in place.
Okay, so collaboration on that?
Yeah.
A note on reversion. Under MHSA, California counties must make full use of the funding allocations received from the state. MHSA fiscal reversion policy specifies that funds allocated to the county that have not been spent within the statutory requirements will revert to the state for reallocation. Many counties, well, what the requirements are is for, is five years, essentially five years for most MHSA funds. If they're in CAT facilities and workforce education and training, that extends to 10 years. But for most funds, it's five years. Many counties struggle to spend the entirety of their MHSA funds because of annual allocations fluctuate, there's also issues with hiring and identifying needs, and so, you know, it's sometimes a challenge. The ACS has originally identified funds subject to reversion based on annual LCBHS revenue and expense reports, which were not current at the time. And so, first, before the revenue and expense reports were current, they identified the following two monies right there as, to be reverted. This is important when they identified it, because they were identifying it based on AV114, which was kind of a second chance that the state gave counties to spend their reversion funds. And so, they said, "Okay, here's the money that we've identified that you need to spend, and will you agree to spend it?" And we did, and it came before the board a couple years ago, I believe, and we just, we agreed that we would spend both those monies by June 30th of 2020, so next year, end of this year. So, for those funds, for reversion is how we decided to spend those funds for our AV114 I don't want to go through that whole thing. Do you have any questions about that?
And the outdoor play structure is for our clients, not the staff.
What? Wait a minute. So, this is further about reversion. This is the uncomfortable part, because we did recently complete all our revenue expense reports, got them all current and correct. And the state identified the following of what is still needed to be reverted. So column B, right there, is what had been identified previously. Column A represents the total amounts of everything to be reverted that they've identified. And so column C is what's left that needs to be reverted now. And so this is that $711,000 we're gonna have to pay back to the state.
But the good news is, we are caught up now on our MHSA fiscal reports. Still behind in other areas in the department. But this is what you've heard me talk about ever since I've been in this position, is that we're so far behind, we didn't know where we were. Unfortunately, this isn't very pretty, but those monies, the time's up, we can't spend those monies now. And so we are gonna have to give that back to the state. But theoretically, we have that money, because we didn't spend it.
So yeah, it was money they didn't allocate.
Correct.
So it's not like you're gonna be losing programs because we have to pay for it.
Right, yeah. It won't affect any programs or anything like that. It's this money that we have to write a check back to the state.
But moving forward, we aren't gonna have problems spending money.
Right. And this for information, this is where the years that that money came from. It was not spent at that time.
Just a point of clarification. You said the PEI and the INN, you gave a certain amount that would be allowed to be spent that was supposed to be reverted back to the state. The rest of the money, and I'm sorry to ask so bluntly, you just didn't know it was there? At that point in time?
You know, there is some truth to that. It's because when you don't have your revenue expense reports caught up...
Right, right, right.
You don't exactly know how much money you have and what is at risk. DSS, you know, you can see this goes back all the way to 2007 and '08. They're just now at the point where they're saying, okay, we've kind of figured out what you owe us back. I mean, they could have told us that five, 10 years ago. And, but they're just now at that point where they're able to tell us, this is what's up for reversion right now.
But they didn't know either, because we weren't caught up on the reports. I mean, it's...
Right. But they're also at the, doing it with the rest of the counties. That's why AV114 came about.
So just to understand, was this money that was supposed to be reimbursed for services? Or was this money we were given and were in our accounts?
The latter. The latter.
Okay. So I'm going to, and I know that we're looking to solve the problem, but I want to make sure it never happens again. I'm gonna look at our administrative staff. How can we make sure that when we do our budget, that every penny is accounted for for what is in our bank accounts, to be able to say, this is what we're looking at, this is the money we have versus we didn't know it was there? I think that's an issue that should not be happening, and I hope that we did solve it, but I don't want it to happen again. And I think it's a budget issue of not seeing the full big picture upon budget to see that we have more money than we thought. It just, I don't know, concerning, glad we're working on it and glad it's supposed to be fixed. But I'd like to know and understand how that money wasn't, we weren't aware of that money? And how is it that we can solve our budget process to ensure that we see all of the money upfront versus just being shown what we continue on a piece of paper that may not be up to date?
Right. You know, I really share your anxiety about that. When I first started in this position last January, I was really, you know, kind of feeling anxious, because I didn't know exactly how much we had or didn't have. And so one of the things that we were really trying to do is get a real handle on that. And part of that, the first thing was that was catching up on our revenue expense reports. And once that was done, we now have the ability in real time to track exactly where all of our MHSA money is. And we can also predict out in the future now where we're at, too, and what reversion problems may be coming into the future to make sure that we have to spend. So for example, this plan that I was talking about, we've increased our spending from previous years, so that we make sure that we're not gonna be, you know, have any money that's subject to reversion. So the budget, you saw that $6.6 million is significantly larger, it's about a third larger than previous budgets, to make sure we don't put ourselves at this risk again.
Giving money back is no good.
No.
But also, being in debt is no good. So I'm glad it was at least in that direction, but we need to, I agree.
And again, why, this is why there's a manager overseeing this, because I think it was, a lot of this was just, I don't mean to say swept under the rug by, you know, prior administration, but I don't think they understood. And again, being behind on fiscal reporting, you don't know where you are. And so I think, you know, money's just, like the housing money I've talked about, that the state did take away, though, but we'll get it back. But I just don't think there was the proper oversight, obviously, of these programs to track all of this.
And I think we need to note, too, these are not issues that you created, these are issues that you came into and you've been doing an amazing job of fixing, so.
Well, as I come here and share the good, bad, and the ugly, and so here we are. But I'm confident that we're, you know, we've cleaned it all up and we're now moving forward, like I said, excited about the new three-year plan. We know where we are.
And kind of, you're going along further what you're talking about?
Can you, I wanted to make a comment.
Sorry, surprise, Brian.
Can you go back to that last? So, I don't remember the exact years, but somewhere in there, to make, to add to Tina's point, there was a time that it was so bad there, that we were having to actually loan money from the general fund to get through, to pay the bills, because there was so much, there was so much that was unaccounted for, not, not in a, you know, criminal, negligent, criminal negligent way, but just because it was just overwhelming. And so that, over time, got caught up, that money was all paid back. And then, like Tina said, you came on board and it was, you know, things have really gotten straightened out and a lot more accountable. So it's awkward and it's uncomfortable to say things like, you know, we don't know where the money is or anything like that, but it's not like that. It's not, it's, it's much better than it was right now and much more accountable and on a good track. So I just wanted to add to that. So I'm not sure what year that was, but it was...
I think 2009 and '10.
I was just gonna say 2009, because I was thinking it was 10 years ago, so, okay.
Yeah, I was here at that time.
Yeah.
That was, thank you for doing that. Going back then, we talk about unspent funds. As I mentioned, completing updating our revenue expense reports also revealed that there was a significant amount of unspent MHSA funds that eventually need to be spent or else to be in danger of reversion. Therefore, as I mentioned, we've increased the budget for this year. And then the final thing there is, the planning for the next three-year, 2023, will start immediately and take into account any potential reversion issues. So I mentioned, you know, based on, since we are caught up in our revenue expense reports, the next one for 1819 is due at the end of December. Our staff is working on it, so we'll be, you know, compliant, so being timely for that, which I'm super excited about. I want to have our next three-year plan done by next June, so we'll be back here in about six months with you guys to talk to you about that. So we'll be caught up and compliant with that as well. And so this is, this is an exciting time. As I said, we're already starting the next three-year plan, we're gonna be doing the surveys and assessments. We're designing them right now, we'll be sending those out, and we'll be doing, starting some community meetings in December. And this process of reviewing and planning for the next three years, it takes about six months to do that. And so we're getting off on it right now. This finishing up this with you, we'll send this, you know, with your permission, to the state, as we're required to do. And meantime, we're starting the next plan. So we'll be timely.
Is there any other questions from the board before I open up the public?
Yeah.
Supervisor Brian.
So, the, I want to be, I want to have a clear understanding, because what, you know, what I think money could be used for is probably, you know, legally not, it may not be, you know, completely appropriate based on the state statutes and all that. But go back to the jail. There's, you know, the jail's full of people that we, that are your clients. And we're taking care of them, we're housing them there. You know, I'll give, I'll give an example that's, that you're familiar with when I'm mentioning names, but there's a guy who was having a bad day out here four months and 10 days ago. He got himself in a little trouble down in town, things escalated because of his behavior, but it escalated. Nothing serious. He's been in custody for four months and 10 days on that. And there's a lot of that that goes on. You know, I set up a meeting with the chief to say, okay, you know, this guy's a frequent flyer, too. He's got, clearly got some issues that need to be dealt with. I set up a meeting with him, talked to you about it, I talked to Tina about it. Tina had met, I guess, I was kind of left out of the loop as far as when the meeting was, so I didn't, I wasn't there. I don't know what happened. All I know is the guy's still there. And I know that, you know, HIPAA is an issue, so we can't talk about that, but his incarceration's not a HIPAA issue, it's public information. He's not getting the help he needs by being in custody all the time. And he's just, he represents a lot, a huge percentage of the people in there. Now, while the correctional staff does a great job with everything that they do, they're not trained mental health professionals either. So, you know, we're talking about, the money is secondary, maybe even lower down the list to me, rather than just the human aspect of it. You know, it's roughly $26,000 that we've spent just housing that guy there. I don't know if he's getting help, I don't think he is, because I see him upstairs and I look at him and it's, it just breaks my heart to see him and others like him, that it just, he's not getting the help that he needs up there. And so why can't some of this money be used for that? Why can't we be using, you know, taking care of some stuff that needs, you know, funding it to jail, funding, you know, for correctional staff that's taken care of this guy and others like him? You know, why don't we have a mental health court? Why don't we have these kind of things that, you know, I don't know if it's being worked on. I've asked the question several times, I've never been given an answer, other than, you know, hearing from, you know, members of your staff, which I don't think this is a, this is a common sentiment that your staff has, I don't believe that at all, but with this one person, it was like, well, what do you expect? It's Lake County. Well, that's not, you know, that's not good enough for me. The fact that it's Lake County should mean something way more than that, that we, you know, we're, we have the ability to take care of these people that we see every single day. They're not just numbers, they're people that we know. So, you know, $711,000 could be, maybe it can't be spent for that, I don't know. But if it can be, it should be. So that's my concern.
Well, that's where, that's where stakeholder input would come into play. Also...
Make sure you have the microphone.
Also, Medi-Cal is an issue. You know, we have to bill for those services. If individuals that are incarcerated are on Medi-Cal, the Medi-Cal stops when they go into jail. So then, my staff, this sounds very clinical and corporate, but if staff goes and works with these folks, we're not gonna get reimbursed for it. So, I mean, unfortunately, we are Medi-Cal driven, because that's what pays...
Got it.
...the staff's salary. So it's a bigger issue than that. I mean, yeah, I'd love to help all these folks, but when it comes to dollars and cents, that's where we're kind of stuck.
Okay. And I get that, and I...
And Scott, you...
And that was part of what the issue was years ago, was the Medi-Cal reimbursements and all that. But to be honest with you, we're not getting reimbursed for correctional staff taking care of them either.
Right.
You know, and they're not getting the help they need. At least if we're, if they're getting the help they need and we're not getting reimbursed, but I think there's more value to that than them just being housed, you know, warehoused out there.
At a high price.
Right. And we are trying to address that. We do, within our treatment teams, we have a specific team that's called Justice Involved Team. And it takes into account, you know, everyone that's in the justice system. MHSA, you probably didn't see one of the programs that was in there, there, under Community Sports and Services, Diferrentic Mental Health Partnership. And that's a specific program to help people that are going from the jail, from incarceration, into the community. And be able to make sure that they're linked with resources, not just, you know, dropped off at four in the morning with nothing, but...
But they have to be willing to take those resources.
Well, that's true. You know, that's a really good point.
And that's the issue that we're having with this gentleman.
That's a really good point, because MHSA...
So we keep, so we, so that's what we hold over them. You're not gonna get released unless you agree to this nonsense.
Well, actually, to add on to your, no, to add on to your story, I've talked with the chief here in Lakeport and behavioral health, and they've, and they've had meetings of what needs to happen instead of arresting people that are having issues that we know are behavioral health issues. And so I know that the chief of police in Lakeport has instructed his officers on what should be done instead of arresting. So I'm hoping the next time that we have issues with people with behavioral health issues, at least in Lakeport, they have the tools to hopefully do something better for this gentleman.
Okay. And we can hope and we can wish and we can dream and all this stuff, but I want to know what's exactly happening. And not just with the city of Lakeport, because I know they have chiefs meeting, they work really closely with all the other law enforcement, and it should be, it should be an entire county-wide issue, not just, you know, the city of Lakeport.
No, no.
So I want to hear what they have to say, or what they're doing, and what they need from us. Because it's not, it's not them, it's not law enforcement that's causing this problem.
No, I know.
It's, you know, it's the, and I'll tell you, I mean, it goes really deep, it involves some of the policies that we make up here. If you think that that jail is not full, off and on, of people that aren't affected by the psychosis that's caused from the high, the high level of THC and the strains of marijuana that we're embracing up here, you're sadly mistaken. What it's done to our county by embracing this entire industry is a disaster. So we have to take into account our actions as well. If we're gonna do that, then we need to give them more money to deal with the result of our actions.
And...
The jail's full of them, I'm telling you right now. It's not, that's not just some theory that I have, I can guarantee you that that's the case.
Well, it's a really good point, and the MHSA and behavioral health in general, it is a voluntary program. You know, the MHSA, it can't fund 5150s or hospitalizations, because it is, by regulation and law, a voluntary program. You know, there is, there is other programs, I mean, you know, I'm sure you've heard of Laura's Law, which tries to address involuntary, but even that, it doesn't have a lot of teeth. It just depends on a judge saying, do this, and, but there's no power behind that judge to back it up.
And that's where a mental health court could work. I've talked to Susan Cronus a little bit about this, and we're trying to work up some sort of a process, but as Scott said, and you've heard me say, our programs are voluntary, other than a couple of court-mandated, like DUI program and what have you. But, and it is a partnership. They, the clients have to meet us halfway as well. We'll provide services, but they have to do something in turn to receive.
Right. And we have a good example of that working in veterans' court.
Yes.
It's a little different. It's not much different, though, it really isn't.
And it works.
It works very well, and it's voluntary. They have to agree to it. And to be honest with you, a lot of them have issues that you're dealing with as well, too. So it's not, it's not a new thing that we're inventing here.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I was just going to mention that last part that was mentioned, the veterans' court, which is more like probation. And at that point, they're not in jail, and once they're out of jail, then you can have Medi-Cal refund.
Right.
And so if it's a, if, I think if you offer a choice of either you're gonna go in this location and you're gonna be locked up, and you're gonna follow our rules to the T and be in a very, I mean, I guess, in my version of life, it would be an uncomfortable situation. Maybe for others, it might be a step up from sleeping in a random place every single night. But if you offer them a jail cell versus a program on the side that is less restrictive, but you have to follow these rules, just like in veterans' court, we're seeing people who are signing up for the type of programs that we're discussing right now. Anger management classes, drug abuse, addiction abuse classes, things like that. And so I think that that would be a really positive way to go, because there's a necessary place in our system for a jail, but for those people, that jail is doing nothing good for them. And in return, to our community when they get released, and nothing has changed. Then we know those individuals, we see them in our communities, and we say, oh goodness, here we go again. And it is, it's a cycle. And so I know that we've had this conversation already, and I hope to continue the conversation. But I think it's one of those places that we're gonna have to go. Even you were telling me, and I know I've seen it online, there's trends going in that direction anyways throughout the state of California. There's grants coming out of social justice programs that can provide, I think that's how we started veterans' court in the first place also, was through a grant. And there's also that for a mental health court and things like that. I do want to mention something about the report, because I'm a stickler for numbers. I don't see... I don't see numbers that I can manage in my mind to understand the efficacy of the programs that we're running. I see that we had 54,000, which doesn't really tell us much, because it doesn't say how many programs or how many actual specific individuals, unique individuals, were involved in those programs, but I'm not seeing outcomes on the report that, that you're providing here today. Because to me, it's all about the outcome. What are, what is our success rate of our programs? What is our failure rate? Let's, let's be very transparent about what's working and what's not working for us, to see if we need to deviate, or if we need to keep on going on with what's happening. And so, without those data points, it all sounds good. We have this program, we have that program, we have this program. And I was looking at the reports that you sent me, because I, I was bugging you a whole lot about reports, and, and in those reports, it's, it's just like in this, it's very vague and doesn't provide specific outcomes on what we're providing to our community. And I'd like to believe that we have positive outcomes, but I have no proof to say so. So therefore, again, it's the same situation as Supervisor Brown said with PG&E, when we don't have the information, we start making assumptions as to what's happening with the programs that we're providing. So, I, I really would love to see some very, it doesn't need to be absolute detail, especially there's HIPAA, but just this program, success rate. This program, success rate. Even if you have one person in five programs, the fact is, we're paying for a program. If that program's unsuccessful, then we need to know and we need to understand how it is that we can change things to make that program better, but without that data, we have a good idea on a piece of paper without any idea of how it actually works out when somebody goes through the program.
And I think we have some partners in the audience that might enlighten us on some of the, the programs that we have and their success rates, to, I'm hoping.
And I think those reports, eventually, when they're created, should be much more easily accessible, because we, we should be transparent about how, how things are working, especially if we're saying, you have a choice between going to jail, or this program, let me show you the success rate, by the way, you're going into a program that doesn't really work out. I think it, it, the more we can prove what, what's happening, the better off people will want to make decisions for themselves, which is what we need to lead people to, is to make those decisions for themselves.
Right. No, a point well taken, and you know I'm all about transparency, so we'll, we'll keep working on that.
Supervisor Brown?
And that's a tough one, too, because you don't, it's hard to do a baseline. I mean, if somebody has a broken arm, you know that arm's broken. If they're having mental health issues, it's a little bit tougher to, to, to say, this is, this is what's broken, and now it's fixed. You know, it's a little bit tougher than that, but, you know, the success of a program. But I want to go back to this, the jail thing, and I, I don't mean to dwell on it, but it really does, it, it bothers me, that, that we, we talk so, so freely about if you're, you stay in jail until we, until you agree to take care of this. Well, how long is that? Is it, it's, is that indefinite? I mean, how long does it take before you just go, okay, we give, you don't, you don't want the help, so we're going to have to release you? You know, and, I mean, at some point, you can't just keep housing people in jail, because they, I mean, there, I was looking at the charges earlier, and it's, it's crazy. It's just crazy what's going on there.
But it's, it's also a double-edged sword. We don't want, and I agree with you, we don't want to keep people indefinitely in jail, but I also don't think we should do nothing about those people going back in a community who, who, who make life uncomfortable, or, or break the law right in our neighborhoods, in our communities. And so, we, it, it's, it's, it's definitely a, a tough situation.
Supervisor Crandall?
Unfortunately, sometimes, people going to jail is the source of getting mental health. I've witnessed that on numerous occasions. They're so hopped out on meth, or whatever else, and our only option was to have them turned in, and they came out, and unfortunately, a lot of them recid, you know, there's recidivism. But, that's just, it's, that's part of the problem that we need to solve, and that's why I like hearing about outcomes and accountability being, being a part of this. And I know you stated, Bruno, that you didn't see that in the report, right? And that's, that's what I felt, too. I know that there is a group, I'm not sure, I think I seen you at it before, prior to my service here, Outcomes OAR at the Department of Social Services. I think you guys went to that group, or something like that. I, I don't know if that has anything to do with this, or if you could implement something like that, but just throwing that out there.
We do collect outcomes. We have outcome measurements that we, that we do overall for, for our clients. And so, I vow, when I come back in six months and present the next three-year plan, we'll have outcomes-
Great.
-within that.
And I totally get it, that individuals react differently to different programs, so we shouldn't always see the same outcomes for all, but at least it, it provides a sense of direction of how things are going. So, I appreciate that.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. I'll kind of go on what, what EJ said. Sometimes, getting into the system is the only way to get them cleaned up enough to really start to address the self-medication issues, because mental health is, they use alcohol, they use over-the-counter prescription drugs, whatever they can get their hands on, all the way to cannabis, each all the way through. And so, sometimes that is the only way to do it, is a challenge. I know that you guys are working diligently on that, because I know, I've made phone calls in young individuals I know that need help. At least you go out and make the visits out there and make the contact, but it's, it's a real challenge. And I would like to see the outcomes. That would be great in the report, if we could figure out some way to do that, but it really comes down to addressing, a lot of times, that self-medication, because it's tough for the individuals to realize, whether it's generational in the family, but you can see the ones that have made the decision, I need the medication to help myself move forward with these mental health issues, and, you know, it's, it's a real challenge. So I know, thank you for what you're putting together, and I agree with everything that's been asked for, to put in the report from Bruno Stambro, so.
Supervisor-
And it's not easy.
No, definitely not easy. I, I definitely don't envy the work that has to be done at behavioral health. Just one thought that popped in my head, when you do come back with those outcomes, is it possible to segregate some of those outcomes to townships and cities? Because I truly believe that environment has a factor in behavioral health.
Yes.
And so, I'd like to see how that pans out, so we can see on where some of our greater efforts need to be made in infrastructure, in housing, and whatever else, because it's not just, are you healthy, or, I mean, if, if you're, if you're unhealthy and you live right next to a power plant, maybe there's an explanation for that. A little bit more detail on the specifics of where they come from as well might provide us more information as to what we need to do as, as a whole.
Andrew?
Yeah, we can certainly provide that. Thank you.
There's nothing further from the board. I'm going to open up to public comment. Public comment, if you could come up and state your name, and then you have three minutes.
My name's Toni Bailey. I'm the Director of Redwood Community Services, and this is Kim Guerra. She is the Program Supervisor for the NEST and the Harbor-on-Maine Youth Resource Center, two programs that are funded through MHSA. I actually did bring you some outcome data that I wanted to share. Do I walk it up to you, or-
Could, to the clerk.
Do what?
The clerk will come.
So, the Harbor-on-Maine is a youth resource center that serves transition age youth, 15 to, sorry, what? 15 to 24. The NEST is a residential life education program for 18 to 25 that have young children between the ages of zero and five. Within the form that I gave you is a bunch of numbers and data, certainly we could actually also take the opportunity to really reinforce some of that data with some greater sub-information to enhance it, to really detail it is, because I am fond of our programs, but I feel like I can honestly say that they are making a, a very big impact in the community, especially to the young people that we serve. I just wanted to take this opportunity to express gratitude for the opportunity to enhance and increase and expand our services. We did apply for some of these extra funds, and will be granted them should it be approved by the board, and those funds are going to go to really be able to strengthen the services that we're already offering, and give the community who are our, our clients, the quality and quantity of services that we know that we stand for. We think that the services that the Harbor and the NEST provide are priceless, but they do actually cost, and so, we are very fortunate for the funding to be able to do this. In the data, we were able to capture fiscal year 1819, and then the first quarter of this new fiscal year. In addition to the number of quantity of services, our guests were kind enough to share some quotes of the quality of care that we provided that Kim is going to read for you.
So, oh, youth from the Harbor-on-Maine. One gentleman, DeeDee, age 22, shared, "I would say it's important, because when you have no help or resources, they are here for you and willing to help with anything in any way they can. Everyone is so kind and helpful, and it's the most peaceful place in Lakeport," which is a pretty awesome compliment. BG, age 19, says, "The Harbor has provided me with a place to keep calm and work on my behavior and social issues. I like the groups and activities, and like how it helps me adult. I like how it provides a safe and secure place for me, and they're always helping me with food, hygiene, clothes, and making great friends with staff. Everyone is so friendly, and it helps me with my mental health." JG, age 23, resident of our NEST program, says, "I have learned so many important life skills that I will continue to utilize throughout my life. I have also learned many things about myself and have gained so much personal growth thanks to this amazing program." This mother recently graduated from our program, has spoken on behalf of our program, and then shared her journey at, like, the Mental Health Matters event, and through Smart Start Lake County, and she's currently in the dental assistance program, and we're just so proud of her. This next mother, CO, age 25, "While the NEST is known for offering a safe place for women and children, for me, it has offered so much more. Not only has the NEST assisted me with getting childcare for my daughter, the NEST has also assisted me with saving money, going to school, and locating housing. I have been able to peacefully and safely parent my child in a clean and neat environment, and will always be thankful for the extra guidance in this relentless journey." This mother also graduated from Menesino College while she was in our program. When she left our program, she moved cross-country to Georgia and now works for a behavioral health clinic.
Nice.
Yeah.
We couldn't keep her here, huh?
Oh, we tried, we tried, but she had an opportunity, and she took it, and we're just so proud of her.
That's amazing. Supervisor Sabatier?
Two comments. One, you're a prime example of us using local resources to provide services. Redwood Community Services, we talked about Motherwise, and Lake Family Resource Center, some of the top three that I can think of. I know there's more, but that's where I want to see my money going, is locally, rather than outside, and I know we're working on that, but I just want to say that I appreciate what Redwood Community Services does. One little plug, if there's ever the chance to bring you back to the South County, let's work on that.
We keep, we have been working and talking and, you know, trying to make agreements, and we're definitely, and we, we're hoping, too, that through the approval of this budget, we can actually get one of those peer outreach workers who will be out more in our community, reaching out to our youth, too. So we did actually propose that.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything that you, that you two do. I know, I see you everywhere, doing great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, hi. Gillian Perillo. So I just wanted to say, I absolutely share the concern about the mental health situation at the jail, working at the home, at the warming center, being very aware of what is happening up there. It is, as you well know, the worst place to be providing those services by people who are not trained to be providing them, and at the most expensive level. So, in the 2018 election, there was a lot of conversation about starting the mental health court, and there was a lot, a lot of, everybody was really into it. And so, if there's anything the board could do to maybe direct the District Attorney's Office and Behavioral Health, and to work with the courts to try to get something started, so it just doesn't keep slipping. It's been extremely, it had great outcomes in other places in the, in the state, so I think it would work really well here. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Supervisor Brown?
Well, just, you know, stating what everybody knows, including Gillian, we, we can't give direction to a department head that's elected. We offer, we offer support, and, you know, I'm not sure of what, where she is with the project, but she is an important component as to whether or not it'll happen. She can't be directed.
But you can tell me what to do.
Well, but you can't do it on your own.
No, I can't.
Yeah. So, you've already demonstrated your willingness to, to participate, and, and actually, Susan has, too. I'm not, I'm not trying to imply that she's not, but that's where it begins. She, it's really, well, okay, so, no, let me, let me save her a little bit, you know, in fairness to Susan. It's not even completely up to her, it's also up to the, to the judges, the judicial factor of it. So, then there are judges that are willing to, to look at it. They've, they have a commissioner that actually works with the Veterans Court, and has proven successful over, over time, so I think it could, but that's where, we can't, we can't direct judges, and we can't direct other elected department heads, so.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I was just going to say, since it was mentioned at Judges' Breakfast, Susan Cronus was our last speaker, that was the basis of most of her presentation, was about implementing some update to what Veterans Court is, and increasing it to mental health, or homelessness, or something along those lines. So I think she, I think she's on board. Yes, there might be some extra resources needed, and definitely a lot of conversations in order to get there, but I, I was happy to hear the presentation.
And I, again, you know, I want to go back to this, I don't think there are extra resources needed, I think it's a shift of the resources we're already using. It's already costing us a ton.
Right, right, right.
In, in, you know, in our, in our community and dollars, but I think it's just a shift of that. So, that's where, that's where we need to focus on.
Go ahead, Joan. If you could state your name, you have three minutes.
Do you have a card?
Joan Moss. I've, I have a few friends who work as senior peer counselors. I'd like to ask Mr. Metcalfe, I came in late, but how many of your grants are from state and federal sources? And are there requirements you need to have and fill out in order to get those grants? I remember Kelly Cox would always explain to people how much of the money coming into Lake County is from the state, from social services, and how much money is coming from the federal government. And I understand that your department has a lot of grant money and funds, and not too many people are applying for them. Is the money we're talking about in the programs, are they, are they sponsored by county money, or are they sponsored by state and federal money? And do you have requirements in order to receive those grant funds?
Right. So we can only talk about the program that we're working on now, so is the program that we're talking about today, is it state or federal?
State.
It's state, state money.
So this is state money we're talking about?
Yes, this is state money we're talking about.
Okay. And I have some ideas. I'll talk to Mr. Metcalfe after the agenda. Thank you.
Great. So any further public comment on this item? See no movement. I'll bring it back to the board, but I would just like to say, Todd, every time that I run into you, or any of your staff, they are always professional, their work, their compassion to help their community is, is off the charts. It's, it's always nice to work with them. And I, and I often see your staff also working off the clock, volunteering in the community, helping the community, so it's really not just a job for them, it's really, they want to see the community thrive and do better. So it's exciting to see that, so just bring that back to your staff, that, that is, that doesn't go unnoticed, we see that. So if there's nothing else, looking for-
Once again, I just, you know, I know we, we talked about the fiscal situation that you stepped into in the department, but in the time that you've been in there, I just want to say thank you very much for pushing the whole program forward, and really bringing those, the fiscal stuff up to date, because that's, that was a huge accomplishment, so, and I, I just, we kind of glossed over it there, but I know when you walked into the situation, there was kind of, oh my gosh, what, what are we going to do?
And now we're at a point where we're getting caught up, so good job to you and your entire department, your fiscal department, and everybody working on that, so excellent work.
Still more work to be done.
Yes, but I just, but you're moving forward, that's, that's great.
Okay, so I'm looking for somebody to offer a resolution.
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Todd.
Thank you guys, yep.
Okay, we will move on to our 7.3 item, discussion and consideration of next steps for the Registrar of Voters office.
Carol? Madam Chair. So as your Board is aware, our Registrar of Voters, Kathryn McMullin, is leaving employment soon with the County of Lake. Her last day on the job has actually been amended though, in the last few days. She has decided to stay with us through December 2nd, so her last day will be that day. She amended her, her original resignation date, which was going to be November 22nd, in order to be here to certify the November 5th election, and we're appreciative of her willingness to stay for that important process. So today, I'm requesting an opportunity to talk to you about next steps for the Elections Office, and I'm seeking your input on how best to staff the Elections function. So, we need direction today, basically for two things. First of all, short-term coverage of the Registrar of Voter function, and then secondarily, long-term coverage as well. So, your first option, obviously, is to recruit for a new Registrar of Voters. Staff estimates that it would be two to three months, probably more like three, given that we have the holidays upon us and recruitment tend to slow down before a new Registrar of Voters could be seated, and the March election, only four months away. So, from our view, that timing is very problematic. A secondary option would be to look at restructuring the Elections function. And Johanna, I had a couple of slides, if you could put up the first one. So, according to Government Code Section 26802, the County Clerk in each county serves as the local Elections official. I'm sure you are familiar with this, this code. And the exception being, of course, counties that have a designated Registrar of Voters Office. And so, in, as you're also aware, in 2002, our Elections function was split off, and, and an independent Registrar of Voters Office was created by ordinance, and that was done pursuant to the next slide, Johanna, which is Government Code Section 26802.5. And you'll see the 13 counties that have authority by virtue of this, led this law to have an independent Registrar of Voters option. Those that are in bold, which is eight of them, are the ones that appear to be actively exercising that option at present. So that's about 14% of the California counties have a standalone Registrar of Voters, like we do. Lake County is the smallest of the eight that are presently doing it, and the permanent staffing in your Elections Office consists of 3.75 permanent employees, which is also your smallest county department. The other 86% or 50 California counties attach the Elections function to the County Clerk, as was per the first slide, and in, in many counties, the County Clerk is a division of a larger department. In other words, in the majority of counties, the Elections Office is a county function, but not a county department. There are a number of different models presently in use in California counties, and Johanna, if you could go to the next and last slide. That's how they are typically structured in some cases, and of course, the County Clerk is, is an elected office. In some cases, it is merely the County Clerk position that has all of the functions for that office, including Elections. In some, it is a County Clerk Recorder. In one, it is a County Clerk Recorder Public Administrator, but here in Lake County, the Social Services Director holds the Public Administrator title. In some counties, this is a fairly common model, Assessor, County Clerk, Recorder. And there are counties like us that have the Auditor-Controller County Clerk, and which encompasses the Election function, but it does not here now for, by virtue of our independent Registrar of Voters. And last but not least, there's at least one that has Treasurer-Tax Collector County Clerk with the Elections function looped into that. So, some recommendations for your consideration today, first of all, relating to the short-term coverage of the Registrar of Voters function. Staff recommends that on your next agenda, November 26th, that we agendize a recommendation specific to returning to the earlier short-term model we had in place early, in early 2019, wherein the CAO serves as an interim Registrar of Voters. This would be for transition purposes only. And your Board could make that decision, if you feel inclined to direct us to agendize it that way. You could make that decision by motion next week. If you did that, it would be effective December 3rd, which is upon the departure of the existing Registrar of Voters. For long-term coverage of the Registrar of Voters, staff recommends that you direct us to return to a future agenda, likely December 10th, which is the next one after next week, with all of the necessary action items to rescind our Ordinance 2560, which was the one that created the freestanding Registrar of Voters, and return the Elections function to the Office of the County Clerk. Your Auditor-Controller County Clerk, Ms. Sederlin, has expressed her willingness to take on the Election function, and in fact, she envisions a structure in which she, as the Department Head, will provide ongoing administrative support to the Elections Office, and her new Chief Deputy, who happens to be Marcy Harrison, would provide traditional, transitional support and training to Elections staff. Ms. Sederlin also proposes the creation of a Chief Deputy Registrar of Voters to be created as soon as possible, to oversee the Elections Division. This would be much like the structure she's building in the other divisions of her office, wherein she will have two Chief Deputy Auditor-Controllers. So basically, she'd have three leadership-level positions reporting to her and overseeing the various functions of her office. She also would propose retaining the existing Deputy Registrar of Voters position that we have in place now, as well as the Elections Assistant classifications that we're presently using. The advantages to this model is that this would enable Elections staff to focus solely on Elections, rather than also having to juggle responsibility for budget oversight and for other duties that are typically associated with being a department. It's tough to do all of that in a small, small department. Would it also enable cross-training within the department to develop depth of staffing? So if one key person moves on, there would be other staff that could carry on. And the way Ms. Sederlin described this to me some years ago, when she was a Chief Deputy Auditor-Controller, she said she was essentially interchangeable with the, with the staff that, that oversaw the clerk function of that office. So it gave some depth when staffing changes occurred. And it also would maximize the use of staff resources when workloads are lighter in one division or the other. So if things are a little slow on one side, there would always be ample work that, that could cross over from the other side to make sure people are productive. The, it's tough to identify cons with this methodology, but, but you may have some in mind. I've heard it said that it's preferred that the Registrar of Voters position be a Department Head position that is appointed by your Board, so, as opposed to an elected office, which the County Clerk, of course, is required to be. But, just a, just a point, a note about that, if the Registrar of Voters position is appointed, it still does report to elected officials, which are the five of you.
There's a big difference.
Yeah, and more accountability.
Yeah.
So, that, those are my recommendations, and ready for dialogue and direction from your Board.
Supervisors Brown?
Well, so, so without having your recommendations to compare them, I had one other thought too, because we don't, and I'm the one that has always had the concern, in fact, I'm the one that brought this to the Board back, you know, 17 years ago, to take it, you know, take the responsibility away from an elected official and the perception of, of all that. But, the, and it has nothing to do with the person that's in the office as much as it is just the possibility, because the person that's in the office right now is not going to be there forever, and so we have to think about the future of that. So, I have absolute, thousand percent confidence in the person that's up there right now. I have no problem with that, but that's not where I have to look my decision on. However, that position is not up for election in this next election, so the perception issue would not be, be the same. There's no election that's occurring that involves the, the Assessor, or, I'm sorry, the Auditor-Controller. So why couldn't we do interim there? If we're going to look at that anyway, why couldn't we begin that interim? They could be doing the interim ROV right now. I mean, of course, if she's, if she's good with it, if you've had the conversation with her, you know, why couldn't we just move with that, rather than bring it to your office and then maybe transition up there?
So, I guess I misunderstood Anita's advice to me before we prepared this agenda item. Because the ordinance specifically says that the County Clerk is not the ex officio Registrar of Voters, I interpreted that to mean that we could not make her an interim Registrar of Voters.
Well, an interim appointment is different from ex officio, which means by virtue of the office. In other words, if you're ex officio, the County Clerk is generally ex officio Elections official, which means by virtue of the office. The County Ordinance presently under Registrar of Voters says the County Clerk is not ex officio. So all that means is not by virtue of the office. That's separate from an interim appointment.
It could be done based on the appointment that we made.
It would be an affirmative act. So if I didn't make that clear, I'm sorry. It's just, those are two different concepts.
Yeah.
So certainly, if we can get right to it, I think that would be the best model.
I think it would, right now.
But my understanding was that we had to, that, you know, that she couldn't be, and in fact, the ordinance would take 30 days from the point.
To rescind the ordinance, yes.
Exactly. So we'd be looking at a gap, but, but if the gap can be addressed.
To change the, to change the Registrar of Voters, to make a permanent change, that takes us 30 days. After the, the rescission, the ordinance rescinding the existing ordinance. But that's different than an interim appointment. And again, I'm sorry for the confusion. My comment is to ex officio, which means that it can't just, it can't just move there. The County Clerk can't, can't take it.
Yeah, again, we could do it, we could do it interim. And, and the thing is, you know, the timing of the next election coming up is, you know, just, it's right around the corner.
Right on us, yeah.
And, you know, we could still begin our process, we, first of all, then we wouldn't have to decide today, or even next Tuesday, what we're going to do. That would give us some time to actually reflect on, you know, on a thoughtful process that's not reactive. So, I mean, we're reacting no matter what, but at least we have our time to, to consider what we want to do, whether we want to keep it where it is, transfer it over. And I, and I appreciate the fact that you've had conversations with, with Kathy, but I, you know, I want to, I want her input on this as well, so.
So I wasn't suggesting that you decide today, which is, which is why I was recommending you direct us to come back with...
But next Tuesday, that's still...
Well, I think you're going to have to decide something next Tuesday, because you're not going to have a Registrar of Voters on, after the second, and so somebody has to be interim.
I get that, but we wouldn't, our decision wouldn't have to be to immediately do your office and then change it, you know, a month later.
It could be limited to, yeah.
Yeah. And, and I wanted to have that conversation today, because Supervisor Scott's not going to be here next Tuesday. I don't know if who else is planning, if anybody else had plans for Thanksgiving weekend, or...
I'll be here for him.
You'll be here.
I'll be here.
But I think it's important to weigh in on it now, for, for her, for Supervisor Scott at least, so.
I appreciate that.
It's a big decision next week. So, anyway, that's what I was hoping that we may consider.
Supervisors Sabatier?
So I just wanted to make one clarification on the report. It said that we're the smallest county that has this Registrar of Voters Office. MODOC is only 8,000 people, 9,000 people. They're smaller than we are and they also have the same situation. So, somebody smaller than us is also doing this. We're not an outlier, is what I wanted to make sure and clarify. I think it's important to keep the Registrar of Voters on a separate basis. I think that there's more accountability, as we just discussed, when there's five people overseeing it, and we are accountable to the people as well. And so I think that it's a better place for us to have. I don't mind the idea of the interim idea with the Auditor-Controller, but I don't think that should be its final destination. I think we need to look at a fix. And so, I would suggest that right away, we also put out and start flying for the position. It's not just about what do we do for the interim, we also have to look at that long-term fix. We need those positions to be filled, we need to make sure to, to make that a robust department. I know that this is the second time now, since I've been here in less than a year, that we are dealing with issues of staffing over at the Registrar of Voters, so...
Yeah, we didn't have that problem before you got here, so I don't know.
Coincidence.
Yeah, I know.
But I, I would like, and I don't think it's in the purview of this agenda item, but I would like to come back with a discussion on what do we need to do to make sure that that department is conducive to success? Because it's very important that that department be successful, be perceived as a very strong department, and it's going to take some time to get there with staffing changes and whatnot, but I, I would like to have a further discussion on the details of what needs to change over at that department to, to make sure that the next person, people in those positions are going to be successful.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I think everybody has a good point. We can talk about it next week a little more, but I think when you talk about strengthening the department, we said it's one of the smallest departments we have, to strengthen that up, I like the idea of combining it with the Clerk's office and the suggestion that was made. That would allow, like we said, for cross-training. You also have succession plans, which we didn't have in place before. You know, obviously, you hope the next one will be here for 40 years, but we know most of the time, it doesn't happen that way. So, anyway, I think that would help strengthen the department and move in the potential direction of combining it, but...
Just want to state my opinion. I think there was a potential succession plan, and either we blew it or we didn't, I don't know. I'm not going to make a statement on that, but there was a potential. So it, it can happen in that small of a department.
So I have a question then. So what would happen, what would it look like if we did put it with the Auditor-Controller and then she comes up for election? What are it going to be, the steps that are being put in place to make sure she's removed from that, but yet still overseeing?
The way it used to be.
So how did that look? I wasn't here, so...
Well, Diane was still the, the Director at that point.
She ran the division.
She ran the division.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's, it's basically, and I don't know, Anita probably weigh on this more, more technical and more articulate than I will, but I'm going to say it's, it's like her office, when she, when her office deals with certain things, there's a firewall. So the best, best I can explain it, that there's a...
We call it a wall of separation rather than a firewall, not to be too technical.
That was, oh, that was the time you were baking the cookies, or what was that?
Just stop, thank you. But, yeah, it would have to require a segmentation, and you'd have to have someone actually within the, the organization in charge that is not the elected official. But other jurisdictions do make it work, and it would be, they all follow a similar model with that type of separation in play. But again, you know, whether there's a combination or not, all that's completely up to you.
And I want to add, there's, there was never, at any time that I am aware of, a, an accusation or evidence of anything inappropriate ever happening, it was all always about perception. That was the whole, whole justification about it, and, so that, that was, that was really it. There really wasn't...
But it's important.
It is, I think.
It is, but may I also say that having spent a number of evenings during election cycles counting ballots, our Registrar of Voter for many years, Voters for many years, Diane Friendly was not in there actually counting the ballots. It was the, the people she found to, to volunteer for that.
Volunteered, yeah.
And, so, there was always a separation. Diane was always very aware of public perception, and I think did an excellent job of honoring the public's concerns, and your Board could ensure that the same type of protocol would be adhered to.
Any further questions? We will open up the public. All right, I'm going to open up the public comment. If you can come up and state your name, and then you have three minutes.
It's still morning. Good morning. Mike Sansa, I'm the Fire Chief with North Shore Fire, and the first thing I'd like to say is that I'm happy to hear that our current Registrar of Voter Director is going to stay to validate the election, one way or the other. That's encouraging. I'm also encouraged to hear that you want to work on the process and make sure that the presumption is correct from the public's point of view. We have, we, the North Shore Fire District, through our Chairman, Jim Burton, and the Friends of North Shore, and citizens have submitted a letter of concerns with the last election, and some of the processes that may or may not have went on, that we would like you to consider. And that's been forwarded to Supervisor Crandall, and, for, for you guys' viewing. I think that, that I fielded a lot of calls since the election about the process, not necessarily anything to do with the results, it was more about the processes. Part of those processes were the fact that the PSPs's were involved, and how did that affect, or did it, affect any part of the election, the mailers that go out. In our district alone, 80-some percent vote by mail. So was that lack of the PSPs's affected? So was that lack of the PSPs affected? I don't know. I don't have the answers for that. And then just some of the other processes that went on, some of the comments that were made in her news articles raised some red flags as to just questions. So I'm encouraged that you're going to look at that and make sure that the processes are done right, and that the citizens at least get the due process of how an election is put on. Okay?
Thank you.
And I don't need to get into it right now, but I'd be interested to hear what the comments were at some point maybe.
Yeah.
Because I know if it was in the record B, there's a chance that it was inaccurate. So I just want to make.
That's fair. And that is fair. But nonetheless, from the public's point of view, they have raised some red flags and have asked questions.
Got it.
I submitted the letter to Anita and to Carol. When I forwarded it, it didn't get to Carol, so I had to send it to her again. I was hoping to either bring it as an extra item, discuss it afterwards, or it possibly will go on the next agenda to discuss your concerns and the letter. And then that way, like following this, I'll get this letter to you all as well. But I wanted to make sure I got it to them first before just sending it to you.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
No, no, not today. Yeah, next week.
Hello, my name is Shannon Stillwell, and I actually am part of the Friends of North Shore. And I just wanted to reiterate the chief's comments. We're not here about the results. We really want to just emphasize the process. We did notice from commentary that came in, we had three points in the letter. One was certainly the power outages and how much they might have impacted the process or the delivery of things and the ability for citizens to, you know, get out and vote. The secondary thing was really about the stability of the ROV office and sort of the transition it's been going through and some of the training, and just making sure that what we've heard in some of the comments was regarding some of the processes and what has deviated from the norm. So there were a couple of different things that just seemed out of character for how we would typically, or how we've seen it in the past. And so those concerns were raised, bringing those red flags up. And then obviously, with her departure being, and nothing against Catherine at all, but the departure being before the certification of the election caused some concerns as well, raising red flags. You said perception's everything, right? So why is there not the desire to certify and stay long enough to be able to accomplish that? So we're appreciative that that will get certified, but again, that's, those are some of the concerns that came up. So we just want to make sure that the whole process in itself, again, reiterating, we're not objecting to the results that have come through, just simply that the process gets looked at and making sure that the registrar of voters office is, has stability in terms of voter elections for the North Shore and everybody else. So this is an issue that will affect the public in the North Shore for quite some time, you know, so we want to make sure that it's fair and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
And I just wanted to state, I don't know if this was yesterday or today, but after every election, you're supposed to do a test of 1% of the ballots to ensure that the accuracy of the machines is there. I don't know what the results are, but I know that that's what they were doing either yesterday or today. So that is going on, and that is a state mandated process, and so that will be, the results will be out there.
Hi, Jillian Perlo. I just wanted to say that there's going to be a lot of candidates, new candidates, who have never run before, filing all of their documents. The last day to file is December 6th. There's a lot of documents that needed to be filed, and just wanted, who will we go to? Where will the expertise be to assist us?
We'll know next Tuesday.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just telling you, that's what we're talking about right now. We don't know who it's going to be, that person, but there will be somebody. There will be somebody there.
And just keep in mind that December 6th is a very big date.
Yeah, of course it is.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? See no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier.
Also, and things change. Yes, we've been used to a process, and I know I was looking for that same process as well, getting updates throughout the night, but this was also the first election that utilized the ballot box versus just mail-in, because the previous election was a mail-in, at least with our new machine. So we have new machines. This was the first time that people at a precinct were utilizing these machines. There were some technical difficulties in the counting of the ballots. New machine was needed to be brought in, and so there was some technical difficulties to not equate the exact replica of past experiences. When things change, things happen, and we have to figure out how to fine-tune it to make it better for the next time. So I know that a lot of us expected similarities, but I just want to make sure that you were aware that there were some difficulties, and it wasn't just a hard change of previous experiences, it was just dealing with things. I would like to check with the board, because I'm all for the interim that we discussed and looking at that for next week, but I'm also asking that we fly the position. My intention is not to make a permanent switch to another department. My outlook is that we need to have a permanent department for the registrar of voters, and in order to do so, we need to make sure and get a director. So I would like to fly for that position.
For me, I think that office needs to have some stability and cross-training, and I'm kind of liking the idea of not having it be a standalone department.
I'm fine with flying the position. I'm good with that, too.
Okay. We have the three to fly the position to keep the department on its own.
That's what I heard. Do we still have the option open of clerk recorder or any other option we can consider? But we at least have to.
We're still discussing next week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That's my understanding.
So is there anything further, Carol?
One item, 7.5, discussion and consideration of the community assistance visit corrective action plan. And this is Michaelin, and this is Scott.
Madam Chair, we need to give a moment for the water resources director to get here as well.
Can we take?
Should we? Okay, taking a five-minute break. All right, we are back in session, taking up our 7.5 item. We have Michaelin and Scott DeLeon here. I don't know who wants to start.
Scott, I can get started if you'd like.
That's great.
Okay, sounds good. So just wanted to open up and talk about a little bit of the background. So in March 2019, Department of Water Resources and State Department of Water Resources, along with a representative from FEMA, performed a community assistance visit called a CAV to evaluate the county's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And Scott would be able to provide some more information about that visit, as it didn't really involve the Community Development Department specifically, although we did supply information. And the, basically, a result of that visit, there was noted several deficiencies that were discovered. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the National Flood Insurance Program. It is currently administered by the Watershed Protection District. The district is administered by the Director of Water Resources, who reports to the County Board of Supervisors, who acts as the Board of Directors. And I wanted to talk a little bit about this letter that was received, and it indicated that there were 14 structures that were highlighted within the letter that we received from Department of Water Resources. And it indicated that there was various potential violations, and that the county needed to prepare a corrective action plan to be submitted by November 22nd. Just want to take a step back and talk about those building permits, the years of those building permits of the 14 structures that were identified, as well as the 53 that were evaluated for NFIP compliance. The building permit years that are included within this report were submitted to the Community Development Department, starting in year 2004 through 2017. So that were the range of the building permit years that this was included within this report, the 53 that were evaluated, as well as the 14. And some of the 53 that were indicated to be evaluated within the letter, they were already included in the 14. And these building permits were finalized within the years 2015 to 2018. And so I want to talk a little bit about NFIP, and Scott, please feel free to correct me if I say something that's incorrect. But NFIP regulations are, were incorporated into Chapter 25, which is the Lake County Flood Plane Regulations, which I understand were, in fact, at least from in the early And NFIP requires, concerning building permits, is flood venting within structures, elevation of mechanical equipment, and elevation of structures. The venting requirements, as well as the elevation of mechanical equipment, has been in the building code, at least we were able to look at the 2013 code. And the way the building codes work is they go into effect, but, so the 2013 code actually didn't go into effect until January 1st, 2014. We weren't able to look at the 2010 code, but that, so there, at least in 2013, there was the venting and the elevation of mechanical equipment, but the requirement to elevate structures did not go into the state building code until January 1st, 2017, was the 2016 building code. So a lot of deficiencies were noted. There is deficiencies in the requirement to elevate mechanical equipment, deficiencies in the requirement to have flood vents within structures, but there was also deficiencies noted about the requirement to elevate the structure. So again, just want to reiterate that that actually didn't go into the state building code, however, but it was required by local code, since at least the 80s is the way I understand it. So part of this corrective action plan, they asked us to do several things, the county, including permitting process improvements, updates to the flood plane management ordinance is required, to evaluate the elevation certificates that were submitted by the county for NFIP compliance, and an implementation schedule for various actions. So some of the things that were immediate actions taken by the county is there were several missing elevation certificates, and a surveyor as well as staff was able to collect a majority of those missing elevation certificates. Depending upon the flood zone, if it's AE, you have to hire a licensed surveyor. If it's AO zone, county staff was able to prepare those elevation certificates. And so we also have put together a procedure, which was listed in, as Exhibit 2, of some immediate actions that the county took as far as there's, we've now been conducting regular training with staff. We have implemented where the job jackets are stamped "Flood Plane." We require a benchmark letter for structures before we issue the building permit. We require two elevation certificates.
We've actually revamped the whole procedure that we do. As soon as the, as soon as the building permit is applied for, we've revamped the whole entire procedure on how we deal with these projects that are located in a flood zone.
So as you can see in the corrective action plan, we have included our permitting process improvements, the updates that'll be included in the flood plane management ordinance, the evaluation of the 53 elevation certificates, and an implementation schedule, which is listed on Page 6, mandated training for county staff. We have indicated would be biannual. Monthly reports, we're currently working with our consultant through our Sela permitting program to add the special flood hazard area zones to our monthly reports. It's not in here, but we're actually looking to take it a step further and print out daily reports that'll be submitted to the chief building official, so he can look at each report daily and see, was there any building permits applied for and issued within a special flood hazard area? And then he can look and make sure those permits have either the benchmark, benchmark letter have been noted, and we're following all the procedures. And we've also indicated that we'll be developing a substantial improvement procedure that is indicated within Chapter 25. It does require approval by the flood plane administrator, as well as the chief building official. So it would require approval, and David Cassie and chief building officials already developed a draft for that, so that's currently under review. We are also currently creating a flood plane checklist, similar to what we have for the planners when we take in a building permit. This would be for the community development technicians, as well as other county staff management to review. So it's going to require accountability. There's going to be checkboxes, initials, and all the way down the line, depending upon what kind of permit that is. And then part of the implementation schedule is to analyze potential funding opportunities in case they're going to want to take this corrective action plan a little bit further to mitigate the violations. And we're asking for time to develop a mitigation program for compliance. Is there anything else that I've missed out, or is there anything else that you want to add or correct?
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you for fixing this and taking what we received from the state and making the necessary changes and setting it up so that we can make sure that we're cleaner in the future. I just had a random thought, and I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Some of our, we're working on the Middle Creek Restoration Project, and that will, I don't know in what sense, change the flood plane, but will we have to update all these things as some of those things potentially change in the future?
Are you talking about updates to the flood plane management ordinance?
Yeah. No? Okay. Because the footprint will basically be the same. Okay.
Supervisor Simon.
Go ahead for a motion.
I think we are.
Go ahead and make a motion, recommend approval of the correction.
Here, put your microphone on.
Oh, yeah.
Recommend, make a motion to approve the corrective action plan and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the last thing that we need to finish is calendars. And Supervisor Simon, were you done with your calendar? Supervisor Brown.
Come back to me.
Supervisor Crandall.
Okay, so today I have a 4:00 PM meeting, me and Carol, and I think Bruno with Cal Trout.
Cal Trout it is.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we'll be talking with them about, of course, the Potter Valley Project, trying to be part of the planning agreement in regarding, the planning agreement group to choose the feasibility study, to see if the dam, at Scott Dam, should be taken down or kept. So there's a group that we're trying to be a part of. We went and actually visited Round Valley last week. Carol drove us. Anita, myself, and Bruno went and visited them, and I'm not sure exactly how, you know, we did get a sandwich, we can say that. That was pretty good, and they were polite, and there were some questions asked, and it still remains undecided on what's going to happen, but.
If you don't mind, it's such a strange thing to ask to be a part of a process that's in our backyard. It's a very strange situation. I'm still not able to wrap my brain around as to how we ended up in this position that we have to ask to be part of a table that makes a decision on what's happening in our county. It's just ridiculous.
I agree. I agree. So anyway, back to my calendar. Tomorrow I have a. Tomorrow, I have a Worth meeting, Town Hall in Upper Lake. Thursday is, I meet with an Upper Lake, a new Upper Lake pastor wants to meet with me, so that'll be interesting. And then, in the evening, I have the Lath meeting. Monday, we have the Army Corps coming, right, for Middle Creek Restoration? Yes. So, we'll be meeting with them and going over the Middle Creek project, Restoration Project, just like we did with Garamendi about a month ago. And so, yeah, that's what my calendar looks like before the next, the next, or Supervisor's meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
So, I don't, I don't have a whole lot scheduled, and I've, I just learned that we were having a meeting next week, so I knew that we were on the schedule, but wasn't sure if we were having it, so I didn't have a whole lot planned for that entire week. But I'll be here for sure for that, prepping for that. I am meeting with our new chief building official on Friday, and that's the only thing I have really scheduled right now.
Okay. Today, after the meeting, I will be doing agenda review for next week's meeting, and then attending the city council meeting in Lakeport at 6:00 PM. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with superintendent of schools and Supervisor Sabatia at 8:30. Still determining where for meeting, and then I'll come into the office after that, and then a first five commission meeting at 2:00.
At LCOE.
All right, LCOE. Thursday, I'll be in the office in the morning, and then I have a Lake County Law Museum, Lake County Law Library meeting at noon, and then a SafeRx meeting at 2:00. On Saturday, I will be attending the hospice dinner, and then Sunday, a Serotimus fundraiser. And then Monday, I will be leaving to go to Chicago. My son's going to be graduating from Navy boot camp, so I apologize in advance, I'm going to miss next week's meeting, but I think it's very important for myself to be there when he graduates, because his father's in Africa and unable to be there. So, he needs a parent there. And I'll be back here the following Tuesday. With that, we've finished all our open items, so we will go into close. I will read the items. 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Governance Code Section 54957B, interview an interim registrar of voters, and appointment of interim registrar of voters. 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiator C. Hutchinson and P. Simak, and employee organizations, LCDDA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSAA, and LCSA. And 8.3, Public Employee Evaluations, Title County Council. With that, we are in closed session.